Ghosts, this is October, right?
Everybody ready?
Sending these things to work.
Susan Spears.
Here.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Justin Jones.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Harms.
Here.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
They're moved.
Roll call.
Susan Spears.
Yes.
Justin Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Taken, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to.
I live at seventy-eight oh four College Drive, and I'm wondering, um, our curbs have been hit by different trucks, and so the curbs are now.
Look at you, Justin.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's our responsibility.
Okay, well, it's, um, Luen Lane and seventy-eight oh four College. Nice sidewalk.
I believe we worked with you on your, um, your frontage sidewalk, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Be like that.
I'm guessing, this is what I'm guessing, uh, the one on the north side, northeast side. Edge Drive. They could truck. And I think. By a garbage truck. I don't know that because I didn't see it. I just know that it was in excellent condition and letting. Pretty new drive.
You would like to see your curves repaired? You would like to see your curves repaired?
Yes.
We will see about repairing your curves. You're welcome.
Welcome.
Agenda.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Justin Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Five A, new business, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number twenty-three oh eight and ordinance amending section one point one two warrants regarding administrative search warrants. Adam.
Susan Spears.
Hold up. Adam, AJ.
Can we tackle this one? I do wrong.
This is kind of a thing. I mean, courts already stepped in, right?
It's kind of a thing, yeah. So, um, this is, this revision. Um, that there's going to be additional case law to define this further, um, because a lot of it, the steps that the court needed to go through in order to grant the administrative search warrant. Um, so what I've done is just add in the pieces that the city can do, and essentially it's, you would just be notifying if you're intending to get an administrative search warrant, um, you would. Base, um, and I do think as it gets more defined, there'll probably be additional tweaks.
Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Spears.
Yes.
Justin Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Five B, consideration of the second reading of ordinance number twenty-three oh seven, ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Windsor Heights related to conditional use permit standards for approval. Uh, motion.
So move.
AJ, any further discussion on the?
Susan Spears.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Justin Jones.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Justin. Justin, is that working? Hold.
Currently, we are waiting for shipo concurrence and approval of, um, I don't want to say it, what? Well, the DOT submitted that to them. They came back and requested that more information was taken, um, or gotten. We quickly little things out there. Um, really, it just pertains to the homes, nothing within the right of way. They came back with some more questions, um, provided some more information. Um, long story short, we still have not heard from approval from them. Um, they are probably end up making as a project for, I think, seven, six or seven homes throughout there that they randomly picked. So that's just an added thing that'll have to be done during construction. Um, but we're just patiently waiting on approval for them to submit plans to the D. Hands and then go on. But unfortunately, when they, they get thirty days to comment, and if they have a little comment, that just starts the clock over again, unfortunately, even though it's a question of minor question, so. Federally federal programs that are tied to the money that we're receiving, um, just to kind of give you an update, the DOT, the money which is federal funds. Prior pa- prior years past, like university, the MPO or the DOT takes that federal money and then what they call a swap, which gives the local minister funding out there, the DOT doesn't have enough money to give out to that. So things have been changing over the years, um, the last couple of years. But then it got changed to fully federal sometime last fall. So unfortunately.
So we're still looking at letting date of March twenty twenty-four?
Yeah. So they'll have, I think, the thirty days from the last is maybe next.
Testing just to make sure that we don't have too much going on that would like affect foundations, or is this just another hoop to jump through because?
End of the process is yes, that is why. They put the font and how they picked these six or seven homes, I still don't know why. I think right now is what I've understand that any, anything that's forty years old is considered in that possible realm of being. It's kind of, the DOT is running with forty years. I think Shippo was saying fifty years, so they're just being conservative and whatnot. So we had Impact Seven G do a whole historical analysis of just a desktop variation monitoring. I think it's a random selection.
Probably be a good idea that we let our constituents. Because, you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time.
Yeah, I guess it depends. We didn't have a complete start date for construction anyways, so we were just going off. It was spring, summer type of construction, so.
About Clive Learning Academy on Seventy-third Street. And so they were under the assumption that we were going to start digging dirt like. And, uh.
We've been in contact with them. It's, it's set up to not do, have construction in front of there until the summer, until school's out, so.
Yeah.
We've been in contact with administration, they're the principal and whatnot, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Justin, is there anything that we can selected officials to help advance or speed up this process?
I'm not, I don't think, just because it's at the federal national level right now. It's not at the DOT point, so.
We have a con.
Yes, it probably wouldn't hurt. Um, I think the thirty days is what they always get, so they get up to thirty days whether they do it sooner or not. It's, and they're part of their thing, so. At least it's not during COVID where. But so that was, that was like months and couldn't do it. There's nothing to do, so.
That's State Historic Preservation Office, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's a federal guideline they give for. Um, five or six phases, I think there's on the south end here, there's a one phase allow all the businesses. Um, it's probably a double phase side of the road. Then we're doing about every five, six hundred feet. Um, and then there's a section in by the school where the school was fine closing down their south parking lot entrance for prior time, but not having them both between their north and south. So that's why some of it had to be done during school where their bus drop off it.
Cart, uh, on this project, and since it's being, uh, let by the DOT. Order at a later date if desired. But on the most recent project sixty-eighth, uh, the courtesy cart, um, line item was the contractor's problem, but they priced that in there. Uh, and it's been pretty minimally used. I don't know if we have an exact number. Uh, sixty-eight Street project, uh, and then because we've got four not a lot of instances that a resident is going to have to walk, um, more than one of those short block. If they were on the west side and had to cross the street, uh, and are presumably parked then on the nearest east-west road, um, except for maybe a short duration in which they're actively paving on Seventy-third, in which case it happened. And muddy. Um, but I want to bring that up just because it is such a significant line item cost, uh, potentially to be included in, in the project. It's something that I'm not aware of being offered elsewhere in cities across the metro. Port for most situations. I'm not saying they're never going to be inconvenienced because a project like this is inherently inconvenient and frustrating for everybody. Um, but some sort of circumstances arise that we want to include it as a change order or as some alternative service during specific times. Really substantial cost for the project here. So eager to hear any feedback you have because we kind of have to make a decision before this goes out to bid since it's being put out by the DOT.
Do we know how many people had a few elderly people that, you know, that walking a far distance, even a short block would be a little bit too much to, to ask. Do we know? Is that something that we're going to run into? Um, on Seventy-third, have we looked into that? I know on college we had issue. Sure that we, if we're doing, if we're getting away with the golf cart, that we have other, other ways for people.
From the open house that like as far as the, the van pickup, that nobody expressed anything about that. So, I mean, the of the van thing, we never heard about until late too, so.
We're looking to see if there's any ADA ramps on any of the homes, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing I guess with the courtesy card is the current process is what, an hour response time? Um, so you have to call an hour in advance to get the courtesy. Is immediate sort of Uber pickup either, I guess, right now. That's part of the reason it's probably not being utilized very much is that the cost.
Teresa, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, so just real quick on the, um, I have gotten a couple of calls from elderly neighbors who live, um, on with this in particular, and they were hoping, um, one gentleman, just because his wife can't walk very far, um, expressed, um, concerns. And so I can give you their contact information and maybe we can just reach out and to the north end of Seventy-third Street. Um, and so, um, anyways, I just share it and I, I would like for us to, um, at least touch base with them. I think um, at least one of them expressed that his wife doesn't have, um, ability to walk very far, and that was, um, a question that concerned me with when we were starting the project.
Obviously, we don't, we're not making any decisions tonight, um, but you're just putting that out there as it's going to something I before you counsel. Anything further, Justin?
Nope. There's other questions.
Little packet, Ms. Harms.
You bet. Thank you. Um, so I just wanted Old Festival, so a phenomenal event, and just wanted to say kudos to everybody and that put in all the hard work, uh, to pull that off and make it work. Um, a huge to the afterbirds and just said thanks for, uh, a really fun event. So, um, congratulations to you ladies. County, um, PC campaign being put on by, uh, the Board of Supervisors and Polk County Public Health, um, largely, uh, being driven by Polk County Public Health and they are providing to be available, working with, um, law enforcement, um, agencies, um, and I think libraries or the other locations where you could go and get stuff to see, um, lots. And so, um, just filling in the the project in our newsletter moving forward, so people know that that's available. Um, we just did, provided a legislative update, just kind of talking about what, um, the expectations are for the coming legislative session. The biggest item really is we've heard legislators talking about uh, with a goal to have zero, uh, income tax in Iowa. Uh, Governor announced September that there was a two person, so that studies a page for, um, the legislature and the governor who are hoping to reduce, um, continue to reduce income tax, um, because, um, found a lot of other big issues. Um, there's a couple of those that are carried over from Polk. Since, um, we're expecting some progress as well as, uh, the board's been committed to, uh, legislation that has way done, not what that looks like yet, but, um, the board is definitely investing on that and how it's potentially impacted by it, so. We, um, the, um, county was able to apply for one of the, um, sustainability, uh, grants available through the federal government because it's been the flag board. So, uh, Polk County was able to receive a million dollars, uh, for sustainable, um, for sustainable planning grant, uh, and that largely working on the county level, um, at this juncture. Project, um, that looking, you know, maybe in the next, next year, the next two years, really being able to help cities and the once we have those slides available for the presentation that was provided, the board, so I wanted to kind of put that on county and what Max said, hearing about what the county's working on as well. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Um, thank you everyone who helped make the twenty twenty-three Fall Festival's success. Chief Roth, Chief Meese, and their teams, Jason, Bill, Brian, and Public Works, AJ Nate, and his wife. From the chamber, our sponsors, our friends at Cumulus Media, and all of our volunteers, but especially Susan, um, for, uh, everything to make it a success. I was so pleased with the turnout. I think that we had, um, close to three thousand. Problem on Saturday for my neighbor's wedding. Um, that's all I got.
Committee agenda, but nothing that's necessarily a hot item. So we've made the executive decision. Well, we, we don't have much to talk about right now. Uh, thank you very much to, um, an amazing weekend. Um, that, that was really, it was really something to, to see and to take part in. Um, I, I was really struck by the number of businesses that took part in the booths, and that was really a nice opportunity. Wonderful. I thoroughly enjoyed the silent disco, by the way, Lauren, um, that, that started a little late. Just brought her computer and started the silent disco on her own without the DJ being there. It was just a wonderful event, and I think that, uh, Windsor Heights can say a, a big thank you to everyone that was involved, and, uh, I, and.
Meeting focused a lot on what our central budget shortfall, shortfall would look like and what service cuts would look like. Particularly people who depend on using the bus to get around, uh, who don't have the option of saying, okay, I won't ride the bus today, I'll drive. Um, and talking them, uh, working on passing their franchise fee increase, um, is a part of that, and part of it will be what other communities would do in order to also increasing what those amounts would be. And that, that's a full range of things. Um, and of course, our, I think the last time I told you, our, our total is somewhere between, um, what would you say, Lauren, like seven thousand some years? Money, but it's not compared to what other communities would do, right? Um, and so, um, continued conversations to come, um, a little it's still my belief that we need to have as much training as possible in our community, and of course. So, um, until I hear from you guys, it's a horrible idea. I'm going to keep saying, yes, we're going to keep pushing and we're going to keep supporting what's being done in the, in the big picture and hope we can get some of our outline communities to stay on and support as well. Um, we will have a meeting tomorrow with Amanda, the new CEO, so AJ and the mayor. Meeting, um, cities, uh, city managers, mayors, um, along with commissioners and the alternate. So just kind of touch base, talk about what the, the plan is for the next year and, and get to know her a little bit better.
Like level, but there is such a wide disparity among people who utilize that to go downtown, which they're not.
This, the planning we discussed last time, some of that reduction could mean as much as a third of reduction ridership.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, I believe it was a, a huge success. I did see a lot of people from not just Windsor Heights, but outlying areas, which was nice. One vendors that, uh, showed up to kind of showcase their, their businesses. So that was nice to, to see, and the businesses came from Windsor Heights and Urbanale. So really nice to see. So really nice to see how everybody kind of flowed together and how it was just a nice, nice event. Sold out. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it was, I, I was shocked. I didn't think it was like eight. How are we gonna? And the, the, um, a lot of the food truck people said how nice everybody was, how respectful, how, you know, even if we gave them the wrong meal, they were like, ah, it still looks good. And so Thank you to everybody who helped, who handed out flyers, who put up the bulletin or the, the posters. Um, we couldn't have made this a success. Give myself a few days off and now I'm back into, um, Veterans Day planning. So, uh, Angie from Classic Kids and Liz from meeting tomorrow to discuss more on Veterans Day. Um, we, it will take place November tenth at the Community Event Center from eleven thirty to one thirty. Um, and I know that we've had a lot of Windsor Heights residents moving in and have a lot of people who are no longer living in Windsor Heights anymore. So if you have, you know, friends or relatives or neighbors that, you know, moved in, if you would just, you know, let me know if they are a veteran so that I can make sure to get out an invitation to them, just because it is hard for me to find the information. Site and they already have to have put in a homestead for veterans for me to be able to find it. And sometimes it takes six months for that to come up on Polk County Assessor. So, um, if anybody has any ideas on how to find this information easier than me sitting watching football Assessor, um, because it is no longer public information.
Isn't it on the website?
It is no longer on the website. I, well, I and then it would show everybody in Windsor Heights, but that is no longer, uh, provide to the city themselves and versus me, and they refused. So. Um, really don't know.
It did happen. Just.
I saw pictures.
I'll tell you, you were there. There is photos that you.
But how much I remember about and sleep deprivation really kicked in too. So other than that, I think that's, that's it. If you would like to, we are looking for sponsors still for Veterans Day. If anybody would like to give any money towards, uh, the, the meal or even, uh, provide some donation of gift cards to
Quick things, uh, first, uh, Councilmember Campbell's being very generous. It was actually IT specialist Campbell that solved the IT issue at the C Um, Mid-American's going to be doing some animal deterrents, uh, installations on the poles. Uh, I did hear back from Councilmember Campbell on a spring cleanup date, uh, potentially pushing that back further than the currently proposed May eleventh, just so that, uh, garage sales aren't suffering from April showers. Uh, welcome any other feedback from other council members of the hall.
I'll agree with that. I didn't respond back to you, but I think I agree with what Lauren says. I mean, going that early, it's cold still too. So if we could push it back a week or two, I think that would be
Garage sale weekend and then the following weekend is spring cleanup. So you can put whatever on your curb that you didn't sell.
Sell.
Uh, and everything else is in the report. That's okay.
Uh, nothing else?
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.